All right, I'm going to call the Springfield City Council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillors Pitts.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Rodley.
Here.
Stare.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
And Pictionary.
I'm here.
Well, very good. Welcome back, everybody. I'm glad we all found the right place in the right Zoom meeting. We have one item today and it's the Development Code Quarterly Check-In with Mark Rost, so I am going to turn it over to Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you tonight your first item back. I don't know how I got first slot, but anyway, the code update, as you know, is an important project and here we are talking about it. So I hope you all had a wonderful summer break. And I am gonna try and share my screen here really quick. Hopefully that works. You can all see it. I don't have a lot of slides tonight, but do like to just present the purpose statement and some of the other items related to the code update. So we'll just go through some of that, but I do think we are, if the city attorney likes us to go through the potential conflict of interest statements before this item each time. So if we could do that.
All right, so I'm gonna start and then we'll go by ward. So I have a potential conflict of interest because I'm a property owner in the city of Springfield.
Uh, no conflict ventures.
I have a possible conflict. It's a statement or word to, I have a possible conflict of interest because I own property in the city of Springfield.
Um, this is Corey Rodley, Ward three, and I have a possible conflict of interest as a property owner in Springfield.
Leonard Stare, Ward for possible conflict of interest on property in Springfield.
Mary Lee Woodrow, Ward five, and I have a possible conflict of interest because I own property in Springfield.
This is Joe Pictionary, Ward six. I have potential conflict of interest. I own properties in Springfield.
Is that everybody? I, sorry, I lost track.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for indulging me on that. And so last time I was before you was June 7th, a few months ago, and that was right before we launched into our community engagement. The council gave direction to staff at that time to go ahead and release the public review drafts of the code at that time. I'm trying to reshare my screen here. And so we did that over the summer. We launched our virtual open house as well as a community survey. And so the first thing I want to do tonight is give you just a brief summary of some of what we heard over the summer in response to that community outreach. We are not, I am not asking for any formal action tonight, so it is just an opportunity for me to present some information and then for you to provide any feedback and ask questions tonight. I'm not gonna dive too deep into any of the details, but focus on the public engagement. So over the summer, we did, as I said, launch the virtual open house and that included a lot of information about the draft code concepts, links to the code sections themselves. A lot of the materials on the project webpage had also included a survey that was primarily focused on the housing portion of the code update. To remind you just the purpose of the project, I'm not gonna read this. You've seen this all a number of times already. But we did present this information, the purpose and the objectives of the code update to the community through the virtual open house as well. So they could get an idea of the initial direction from the city council for this project and what we are trying to achieve. As you all know, and hopefully recall, the state legislation requiring cities to do certain things with housing code updates, the middle housing requirements, House Bill 2001 primarily at this point is requiring us to look at how to implement middle housing. So the majority of the community survey on housing also related to House Bill 2001. So just to give you some sense of the level of community involvement we got, we received response, 80 responses to the community survey. And so that was open for two months. That's not a huge number, but it's about in the range of what we were expecting. I have looked at our neighboring jurisdiction. They did some similar work around. They're not doing a comprehensive code update like we are, but they are also working on implementing the middle housing legislation. And I believe when I looked, they had received, I think in the neighborhood of mid 200s, I want to say 267, don't quote me on that, but I remember that being a rough idea, the number of responses they received to their middle housing survey. So in comparison to the neighboring jurisdictions, we felt the 80 number is a pretty good response. We had translated the survey into Spanish as well and released both language versions of the survey. We did not receive any responses to the Spanish version of the survey. However, as part of the survey, the last handful of questions were related to demographics. They were voluntary questions. They were not required. Out of the 80 respondents, 12 people generally didn't answer the demographic questions. But of the 68 responses to the demographic questions that we got, 10%, it was roughly seven people self-identified as Latino or Hispanic in those demographic questions. So of the 80, of the 68 people that actually answered the demographic questions, seven did respond with that. So we felt good like we are, we were endeavoring to reach some of the underserved portions of the population of Springfield. I'm not gonna, I haven't actually processed all of the survey results yet. We're still working that and putting it in a format that's a better presentable format. So I'm not gonna share any slides about the information tonight, but I will share some preliminary numbers. This is based on the raw data at this point. There were really only seven primary questions. It took about 10 to 15 minutes for people to go through. Working with our public relations staff, they felt like that was a pretty good timeline of expecting people to take a survey and not have them get bored of it and not finish it. So that 10 to 15 minute timeframe for taking a survey was the goal. So limiting it to seven questions got us to about that timeline. The biggest results that stand out to me weren't really a surprise, and I think I've talked about these before to you. The biggest one that jumped out to me was parking under the state laws for how we implement middle housing. The most parking we can require generally for middle housing types is one parking space per dwelling unit. And I've mentioned this before, so for a new triplex, the most parking we could require would be three parking spaces onsite for that triplex, one per unit as an example. And so, but we have the opportunity to require less parking to try and further incentivize middle housing because parking is one of the most costly aspects of developing housing. It eats up a fair bit of land and also costs to develop it. So the responses on the parking question about, and really we categorize the questions in three kind of categories. And one is, should we do the minimum required by state law and only, and for this parking example, require one space? Should we encourage more middle housing by maybe requiring slightly less parking? Or should we maximize the amount of middle housing we hope to get? And that is potentially require no onsite parking. So the responses to this specific question were overwhelmingly that we should require the most parking possible under state law. It was 80. Uh, let me find the number. I'm sorry, not 80%. 57% of respondents felt that we should require the most parking that we can require. The other two categories, the require less or don't require any at all were 15% and 14% respectively. So to give you some idea, that is the one question where the, it had the heaviest lean towards having the most strict requirements. The other one I'll jump to, which this wasn't a surprise, kind of, I've categorized these two topics in the past, and to me, the two hot button topics are density and parking. And so the other question relating in my mind to kind of the density question is really talked about in terms of the lot sizes that are required for the different middle housing types. So the state says that we have to allow a triplex on at least every 5,000 square foot sized lot that allows a single family detached home. And for a fourplex, we have to allow fourplexes on 7,000 square foot lots or more that allows a detached single family home. So the question, again, it was the three categories require what the state requires mandates we require. Encourage it by allowing less or maybe maximize the amount of middle housing we can have and not have any lot sizes potentially. This one was actually surprisingly pretty balanced between the two ends of the spectrum. They were 38% and 37% respectively with require the largest lot sizes we can versus allow the smallest lot sizes we could or not have any minimum lot size. So it was pretty balanced. And then lastly, the third one I'll touch on is the flexibility with how these middle housing types are allowed. So we've talked a lot about plexes and I talk about triplexes and fourplexes. So we have to allow those to be attached units. So a typical duplex or triplex are three, two or three attached units. But we can be more flexible and allow a triplex, say, to be three detached units on one lot, like little cottages, and that would still qualify as a triplex. And similarly for duplex and fourplex. The results for this question were overwhelmingly that we should allow the flexibility to allow the detached units. It was 80% of the respondents thought we should allow the detached units, where only 14% thought we should require them to be attached. So that's kind of all I'm gonna touch on, on the survey results at this time, just to give you some sense. And why I ended with the attached versus detached question, kind of transitions me into the next topic I want to talk a little bit about. And that is some even new legislation that I've mentioned before that we're trying to figure out how to incorporate into the code updates. It's Senate Bill 458 and
Mark, could we go back to the survey for a
Sure, yeah. If there's questions about any of that, I'm happy to expand or elaborate, so.
So in a world that we're, and this is me trying to get my head around it, where we require no minimum lot size, right? Wouldn't it work like small, like mini homes that the building code would define, you know, the code would define what the minimum is in different ways? Right?
Correct.
That effectively we would have an uncoated minimum lot size.
Right. I mean, building code, I think the number, I want to say it's 200 square feet. It might be even less than that. In theory, you could have very small homes. So we wouldn't regulate the lot size. So the smaller units provide, the more, the more of them you could fit on a lot. So you could put four, say, 500 square foot units on maybe a 3,000 square foot lot. I mean, you still have to meet setbacks. We create essentially the building envelope. So we have setbacks and we have a height. We're also going to have still a lot coverage standard based on stormwater management requirements. But so within that envelope, if we didn't have a minimum lot size, we would let that building envelope regulate. You kind of reverse engineer it. You say, how many unit, based on the size of units I want to put on the market, can I fit on that lot?
Yeah, and I think that would be, that would be an interesting question to understand. I know that this is the early cut of the survey would be to say, okay, effectively, if we've removed that regulation, effectively, there is a regulation, but it's sort of between the setback rules and the building code rules, what would that even, what would that even look like? Because I think that would put us in a position to respond if, if there's a path there that we want to go down. Like, it's a, it's an out there idea, but like, it's, it may be worth just simply asking a couple of questions and, you know, saying it out loud to see if, how crazy of an idea it is. The other, the other piece that struck me is odd when you kind of went through it, and I'd love to see, I know you're gonna send the numbers out at some point, is that, that parking standard, right? Like, I think that, that I, you know, we, the Public Works of Planning does a ton of education, right? Like, and just being able to put more facts about, about what, you know, what maximizing parking even looks like. Um, I think would be, become an important conversation around affordability, because I don't think people connect, they connect probably convenience, but not they don't understand that you're just pushing cost into the project at that point. So that, that was the only two comments I had.
Great. I appreciate those. And just to clarify again on the parking, when we're talking about maximizing the amount of parking that state law will allow us to require is the most is one space per unit. I'll just mention too that there, there is rulemaking at the state level going on right now, not in response to legislation, but in response to the governor, one of the governor's executive orders for, and I can't remember the title of it. Some of you may know it better than me. I haven't been tracking it that closely. Emma Newman with our staff is on that rulemaking committee. But it's related to kind of the green energy or clean energy executive order that the governor put in place. And so it's anticipated that there will be more administrative rules coming out based on that, that we will have to respond to. And I would envision some of that likely could impact the parking and other, some of these other standards potentially. So we are tracking that and would anticipate some future changes.
So, so Mark, and then I'll let Steve go. Would you describe the amount of rulemaking at the state? At the state level as being a headwind to being able to actually move this project forward?
I'm not sure I'd use the term headwind, although I think that's fair, but it is. I think we can't, we, so first of all, as you know, we have to implement middle housing. And if we don't, the, the rules at the state level go directly applicable to us and we don't want that. It would be a worse situation from my professional opinion. So we have to adopt something by the end of next June for middle housing at the very least. But I think what the level of rulemaking is doing is requiring us to continually respond to those rules and amend our codes to be in compliance with them. So it is definitely creating more work for us.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Mo.
Uh, the, the document you're talking about from the governor was climate friendly and equitable communities rulemaking.
Thank you.
And I've got it right here in front of me. I was interested in that parking, parking section. And so these are, these are advisory. And if these are, I'd say those are implemented. Will they overlay the current building code revision that we're doing now? I think I said that the other day at the meeting.
So the, the code update we're doing now isn't precisely building code, but the, the land use and zoning code. So, but there, my understanding and not having a deep understanding of the draft rules is that it does involve some actual building code potential changes as well. So not only does it have the poss, potential to, requires to do some additional zoning code updates, but likely or potentially some actual building code updates too. Typically, the building code stuff is updated at a state level. And then we just adopt it locally, so it's more universal across the state, but I'm not as aware of the building code changes.
Anyway, it's an interesting document and we'll see where it goes.
Yeah. Any other thoughts or questions about the survey results at this point? I will be sending out some more detailed information on that once we get it processed. I was jumping into, and I do want to
I have one question and unmute myself. When you're talking about allowing every 5,000 square feet or 7,000 square feet, is there a maximum you can allow?
It gets tricky when we start talking about minimums and maximums. So we have to allow a triplex on a 5,000 square foot lot or larger. We can't say you have to have 6,000 square feet to allow a triplex. But we could choose to allow more flexible to say, well, you can do a triplex down to a 2,000 square foot lot if you want. So there are no, there is no floor, I guess. Again, it gets kind of confusing when we talk about maximums, minimums, or floors and ceilings, but we could, like I said, the, the question was, we could say you can do a triplex on any size lot. If you had a 2,000 square foot lot, which is very small, even for a single family home, if you want to put two tiny dwellings on that or three, if they're you can figure out how to meet the other requirements, there is no threshold or other sidebar on the other side to say, we can only go so low.
Okay, okay. That's, that was my question. Yeah, I knew, I knew, you know, what we were supposed to allow. But you know, if we allowed three on a 5,000 square foot, we could actually allow six if they, if they were able to do it. Okay.
And that's a great point because we have some of the public comments we received are advocating for what I've mentioned in the past about deeper affordability option. And that is, so if somebody proposes to have permanent affordable housing, that the, the point would be they could be allowed to do a even higher number of units. If it's meets a threshold of affordable to a certain percentage of income for, you know, a certain section of the population, that there could be a bonus, for instance, for the number of units, if it was truly affordable housing and would remain affordable housing.
Okay, thank you.
So any other thoughts? I wanted to provide plenty of opportunity and I didn't want to take up the full hour to provide opportunity for comments and questions tonight too. I don't have a ton of material to cover. I was primarily focusing on the survey. But I had jumped into starting to talk about this, the middle housing land division legislation as well, that we're still trying to figure out how to incorporate into the code update. Because this legislation came on much later in the process. But the timeline is such that we have to implement it together with the new middle housing rules. It's a bit more of a scramble to figure out how to incorporate. But the new, the Senate Bill 458 for the new middle housing land division requires us to allow division of the middle housing types. And why I had tied this into one of the survey questions about flexibility with allowing detached plexes versus attached plexes is that it impacts the ease of which you could divide those units onto their own lots. So for instance, you build a triplex that are all attached, so it's side by side, let's say, with common walls. Then you, you could still divide those. It's just that the building construction type under the building code would have to meet a higher standard for the firewall separation. Versus if you were going to leave it as three units on one lot, the building code requirement isn't as, isn't as high of a standard because they're not going to be divided. But if we allow those same three units to be built on one lot and be detached with setbacks between them, then it may be that it would be a little bit easier to divide those three smaller units onto their own each lot without having to worry about the construction type of firewalls and things under this new middle housing legislation. I will mention one of the provisions for this new, I should say, middle housing land division legislation. One of the other requirements for this land division is that each unit is on its own utilities. So for instance, water, sewer, electrical primarily. So it really either would have to be a pretty expensive retrofit to come into, say, I'm gonna keep using the triplex as an example, but this applies across the board for the middle housing types. To retrofit a triplex, typically if you build just a triplex on one lot and are gonna leave it on one lot, it just has to have one water and one sewer service that's shared amongst those three units. If you're gonna want to ultimately divide them, you would have to separate those three separate water and sewer services. And to do that after the fact would be pretty involved. But if you anticipate that you're going to build it and build it that way upfront, then it makes dividing them off easier after the fact. You can essentially use this new middle housing land division legislation concurrent. You can do the land division concurrent with building the middle housing itself is the way it's worded. So anyway, that's a really high level kind of introductory piece to that new legislation as well, that we're trying to figure out how to incorporate into the, that middle housing legislation. So with that, I just was gonna touch on the timeline. This, you've seen this timeline a number of times. We're still moving down the path as, as most of you will recall, we've extended this timeline a couple of times. One, in response to the new middle housing legislation, and then also to adjust for some setbacks related to COVID with just having to be harder to, you know, do public outreach and things like that. So we are running Phase One, which is the residential housing phase that's represented by these yellow bars in conjunction with Phase Two, which is represented by these orange bars, which is the employment lands phase. So we are right here now, moving into the fourth quarter of the year, moving into this, the next phase of going forward to start the adoption process, which is first going to involve taking what has been the public review drafts of all these code sections and now incorporating information we've received through the community outreach and preparing final public hearing drafts of all those code sections. As well as preparing all the legal findings needed to justify the code changes. And then preparing that as a big public hearing package that will first go to our planning commission for public hearing. And they will make a formal recommendation ultimately to this body, the city council, where there will be another round of public hearing process. And ultimately looking for an adoption by the city council for all those. That's represented by this nine month bar of adoption process that we hope will be at the latest done by the middle of next year. Specifically for the housing phase due to the requirements under state law to adopt middle housing. We have to have that in place by the end of June, June 30th of next year. The employment phase, the employment lands phase isn't bound to that kind of a deadline, but because we're running them concurrently, that's still envisioned to be the goal for the timeline. We are now also, as you'll see by these blue bars, beginning to contemplate how we're going to launch Phase Three of the code update project, which I fondly call the everything else phase. We have just a Portland State University has a fellowship program and we have engaged two fellows now. There was a fellow that helped us over the summer. And then also a fellow that just started today was her first day. And we'll be working over the winter through most of next spring and on this project to help us start that Phase Three work. And the first steps will be doing what, how we started Phase One and Phase Two, and that is doing an audit of the rest of the code sections to determine what does need to change, how to prioritize all the other changes of sections that need updating. And then proceeding down the same path we did with Phase One and Phase Two. So we will continually update you as we start Phase Three and move through those steps and be seeking your feedback as well. But we are focused primarily right now on moving into the public hearings. But we are focused primarily right now on moving into the public hearing stage for the phase one and phase two, getting um, a public hearing scheduled in front of the planning commission for this fall. There are portions that definitely have to go also in front of the Lang County Planning Commission. So this um, will be a joint public hearing process. It'll be similar when we get to the city council level that it will also have to be a joint public hearing process with the county board of commissioners. Um, there are some elements that don't necessarily have to go through both bodies. But, and we're still working with the county on some of those dynamics and logistics. Um, it may just turn out that it's easier to take the whole package through both bodies for approval. Um, rather than try and separate it out. So again, we're still working with the county on some of that, but that's where we're headed. And with that, um, I plan to be back in front of you for the next quarterly update after the first of the year. It's pretty tough, as you all know, to schedule the quarterly update in the, over the holiday time in December. So just after the first of the year, probably right after your winter break, I'll be coming back to you maybe first thing and giving you an update where we're at in three months from now. Um, but with that, I'm happy to go into any more detail or answer questions or listen to your feedback as well. So I appreciate your time.
Are there any questions? Or comments? Uh, Joe?
For Mark, I am curious. When you're talking about the parking structure, the parking requirements or lack of requirements or whatever modifications that I'm curious. You got responses and you got a committee. Were there, where were the developers at in on that subject? Because it seems as though I guess if you're querying people that don't have to do some of those things, you're going to have a completely different perspective for the ones that can or cannot do certain things and they're the ones that will kill a project as opposed to have a project move forward. Just because you have a bunch of people that say, hey, that's a great idea. Let's move forward. Well, those are the people that aren't potentially, those are the people that aren't doing that and they are just pushing forward or we would end up pushing forward great ideas in other people's minds. That's a, that's a development killer. So is that, was that, was that weighed?
I would say yes, it was weighed. As, as you know, the, the technical advisory committee was made up of um, a broad spectrum of members of communities that are involved with development at different levels, but it included developers on our technical advisory committee for sure. We don't know who all the AD respondents to the survey were. Um, but I do know that s- specific people reached out to me and I directed them to the survey and some developers did take the survey. I do know that. But I think one way to think about the parking is, and some of the direction for the project is to create flexibility within our code. The parking requirement of one space per unit is the most the city can require to be built. But it doesn't limit somebody from developing more parking if they choose. And so if they feel the market is demanding two spaces per unit, for instance, they can develop that. We don't have a maximum. But the most the city can mandate they've developed is the one. But if they propose and choose to develop two or more, um, they can. So I don't know if that exactly answers your question, but it, all the perspectives definitely through the, the tack were weighed in figuring out how to to balance that. And again, the state law is the state law mandates that, that the maximum we can require. If we want to require less as a policies, policy decision of the city council ultimately, we could say what you, the city's only going to require a half a space per unit, or we could say we don't, we'll let the market completely decide how much parking you want to develop. We're not going to require any and let you decide how much parking you want to develop. Obviously, that's balancing with the livability of the community and some of the neighborhood concerns with now parking is just going to be everywhere on the street or people parking in their yards or whatever some of the concerns might be around livability and the beautiful um, nature of our community. But so again, it's, it's a balancing act.
Yeah, no, that, that answers my question and I would, just to put it out there is that I would not support having uh, no parking requirement. I think one makes sense and if a developer wants to do two per space, which also gives them flexibilities is because if they have a size in mind of each unit, if a larger unit, let's say it's a three bedroom, two bath unit, then one would, one could easily articulate that it would probably uh, be on the market for, for better value if it had two parking spots available. So I get that and it makes a lot of sense. I just want to, and I appreciate allowing the maximum amount of flexibility. I'm not, I'm not supportive of the city going in and creating a uh, no more than type code. I think that would, that would be a, a deal killer, a development killer. Um, nor am I supportive of the city saying, okay, you, you can't put so many spots. You're going to limit it to one half spot per sentence. So I think that's a, you landed on a good spot. And, and it would be nice to be able to know though, is if um, there is a, and I'm not sure how you write it, but to allow in development for some variances that, that interpreters or planners that, okay, plans, et cetera, think that whatever they have in front of them is set in stone. There, I mean, it just, um, it just seems as though it's easy to follow the book and go black and white and say, okay, developer, this is what the book says. So this is what you, this is what you have as opposed to having something in there that says, okay, here's where our area of flexibility is. Something, you know, it just seems to be developers are, are running up against a brick wall when it comes to some things just don't make sense at times. And when those things just don't make sense, those are when the developers should be able to say, this doesn't make sense and staff should be able to say, you know, you're right. Or at least have it to where the director or whatever can immediately get pushed up to there instead of months down the road. So that's, that's the problem is, is you know, I like all the staff and everything, but I, I really think that we, you know, I guess, I guess, I don't know. Sean and Merrily, how long does this go back where we can say we gotta get to yes, we gotta have the mindset of let's get this project to yes, and if it requires a little bit of flexibility. Okay, let's have a little flexibility. As long as it's not illegal, immoral or unethical, then let's do it. I mean, that's, that's how I feel. It, we just, I would just like to see more of getting to yes and even staff becoming an advocate for the developers to get projects done. So anyway, okay, I'm, I'm, that was my bandwagon.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, I've been pushing that too because the, the guy that's getting the permit at the counter, the guy, the staff person can only permit so much, or I, I actually follow the rules, I suppose, specifically, but there is a point there where maybe, maybe we can bring the director in and make it more flexible and get the project done, get it moving because that's really important. Make the customers happy and build the city.
Corey?
Thank you. Um, so first I appreciate just, my comment is just, I appreciate the updates. Um, for me, having just been just several months on council, I'm really starting to wrap my head around the difference between land use code and building code. And um, you know, I want more flexibility in all of it. So that, um, my question about the parking though is is there any way to um, to have different regulations depending on how many units you have? So for example, or does it just have to be across the board? Like it's a parking space per unit? Or if someone was to have a, you know, like 7,000 square feet and put like eight units or something on it, could it be less? Or do we just have to do a minimum regardless or a maximum regardless?
So specifically for middle housing, which is duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes and cottage clusters. The state rules are very prescriptive and this is the most we can require. And is, it's generally the one space per unit. So above that though, when we get into, um, you mentioned and say seven or eight units. That to us would be outside of the middle housing standards and would be more kind of the medium density, like apartment type style development. So we're not bound by state law for that type of development and we can come up with our own provisions for what should be required for more, more dense residential development. Um, a lot of our parking standards, we recently updated, we went through a TSP implementation project and updated a lot of our parking standards. Um, but the other thing I'll mention is, is for uh, back to the middle housing is, and even for the other types of housing, we can allow less. We can't require more specific to middle housing, but we could tie that, say, we wanted to provide uh, allow less parking if it was in proximity to say Main Street or a, a frequent transit corridor. So if you're within maybe a quarter mile of a transit corridor, maybe that's the area where less parking could be required. And even again, for, for um, we built some of that into our updated parking standards for other types of development as well. So there is some opportunity or creative ways to do less. But specific to middle housing, we can't require more, even depending on certain things. Hopefully that answers your question.
That does. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And yeah, I, I think this is a really good discussion. Um, the, I guess the one comment I would make is I always hear us try to balance that, that having clear standards that we tell developers get to yes with also understanding that each development is sort of unique and has its own characteristics and right, like, and you know, needs to have, you know, be treated as its individual case. So I just want to sort of pull back the conversation and what I'm hearing fo- folks say is not necessarily to add a bunch of process to, you know, make it clear what people can do. But also a lot like if we can find places to like balance that and find, you know, apply some sort of common sense based on, you know, what's actually happening, that would make, that would make a lot of sense for us. That's ultimately what we're striving for.
And if, if I could just chime in on that point a little bit, I think you, it, it's a great point and that is it's fairly universally recognized that our existing code is broken. It, it doesn't work. It's very difficult to implement. And it's very discretionary. So state law actually requires, as you just mentioned, for housing specifically, state law requires us to have a clear and objective approval path for approving housing. And we heard that a lot from the developers too. They just want to know what the rules are very clearly. Here's what you have to do. Our code now is so subjective that they don't really know what the rules are. It's, it could depend on what day of the week you're asking or who you're asking or, so even for staff, for the developers, for the whole community, knowing very clearly what the rules are and as required by state law is required and, and more usable. At the same time, we have built in and um, councillor Pictionary referred to kind of a variance process. So along with having that clear and objective approval path, we can have an alternate path. And that is, well, we don't like, or those clear and objective standards don't work for this particular project. So they can opt into another path that has some subjectivity where they can ask for exceptions or variances to the clear and objective rules that does give discretion to the process to allow the more creative types of solutions.
So um, I, and I would just add two points of, two points to that. I think that's a really good description of where, of, of where we're going. If it's really easy and I don't not envy your role, you know, your job, Mark, because you're trying to boil all of this down into a workable code. It is so easy if we want to be clear and objective to write 10,000 pages of code. Right? So it's got to be, we're sort of ju- looking for just right, right? So and the other piece that, that, right, anytime we drop drop people into a discretionary path, that is gonna, that is where all the sort of fallout and errors and anxiety is going to come from. So I'm, you know, I would be okay in a clear and objective space if we just, we allowed people, I don't know what the number is, to come in within 10% of the standard, right? Like, and just build a variance in and say, hey, look, we set the standard, what we're looking for. If you're over by 10%, you're fine. If you're under by 10%, you're fine, just to try to keep people in the path where it's clear what we want and we get to yes.
Yeah, these are all great comments and um, feedback. So I appreciate it.
Um, any other comments before we? All right, then we will talk to you again when it's um, the next time, Mark, and thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
We are going to reconvene here at seven. So if you want to uh, drop your camera and go unmute and we will be back on the same link at seven o'clock. Thank you very much. We're adjourned. All right, I'm going to call the regular session of the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare. Councillor Woodrow.
Here.
And Councillor Pictionary.
I'm here.
All right, please note that uh, Councillor Stare is excused for the evening uh, for our conflict. Um, would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
First starters.
First to flag.
I'm, I'm waiting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us online to keep yourselves on mute until you are called on to provide public testimony. There will be two times this evening uh, designated for public testimony and will be listed as public hearings and business from the audience on the agenda. If you're joining on us online with a tablet, smartphone or computer and wish to speak during that time, please use the raised hand feature when the agenda item is called. When we call on you, please state your name, in Ward or general location in the city for the record. First item, please.
First item is the consent calendar.
Are you ready for me?
I am ready for you.
I will make a mo- motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in seconded that we approve the consent calendar. Uh, Neil, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Councillor Pitts.
Hi.
Councillor Mo.
Yes.
Councillor Rodley.
Yes.
Councillor Stare. Councillor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Councillor Pictionary.
Yes.
The motion passes, uh, five, zero and one absent. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearings. You have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one is a request for metro plan diagram. is a request for Metro Plan diagram amendment and zone change for 1.4 acres of property located at the northwest corner of Markola Road and 28th Street. Ordinance number one, an ordinance amending the Eugene Springfield Metropolitan Area General Plan, the Metro Plan diagram, by redesignating approximately 1.14 acres of land from medium dead city residential, MDR, to commercial C concurrently amending the Springfield zoning map by rezoning the same approximately 1.4 acres of land from MDR to community commercial CC, adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date. This is the first reading and Andy Limbird is here for the staff report.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, councillors. I'm just going to share my screen. I'm going to have a PowerPoint. If you bear with me here, I can show the site. And you start the slideshow from the beginning. Hopefully you can see a map of Springfield. The site is well known to councillors. It's the Markola Meadows neighborhood. This particular site is right at the corner of 28th Street and Markola Road, just at that northwest corner of the intersection. Councillors may recall that about a year ago, much of the neighborhood was re-designated and rezoned from commercial and mixed-use commercial specifically zoning to medium density residential and public land and open space. And that was to facilitate changes to the neighborhood configurations. Since that time, the applicant has revisited their decision to essentially winnow down the, the commercial designation and zoning to about nine acres and to add back about one acre, just a little over one acre of commercial land at that intersection to facilitate a medical office development. So this is not the most current map of Markola Meadows. Things are happening, happening fairly rapidly and I wasn't able to get the 2021 map which shows a lot of the construction that's occurred on the site. So hopefully be able to get that if there's another follow-up meeting or anything like that. But the site is in this extreme southeast corner of the neighborhood. So about 1.14 acres for read, read development and redesignation. The site is identified on the metro plan. The metro plan designation and was changed with the previous action of the council. And so the applicant is proposing to re-designate from medium density residential to commercial. It's a little hard to see at just one acre scale on the Springfield map, but it does register. This is the current land use designation. A little bit of the western boundary of the property is actually already zoned and designated commercial. So it's just a little bit less than the actual property area. And so the proposal is to have a consolidated commercial site at the Markola Road and 28th Street intersection. So that would be commercial designation. Similarly, the zoning would be changed concurrently with this redesignation from medium density residential to commercial. And this is the master plan for the neighborhood. The current commercial area and planned driveway is west of the intersection of 28th Street and Markola Road. For the planning commission public hearing, adjacent residents had expressed their concerns about commercial development along 28th Street. They had cited traffic concerns and commercial vehicles entering the neighborhood. Staff would like to point out that the shared entrance for this commercial site, should the rezoning and redesignation occur, the site access is fixed at a shared driveway, which is on Markola Road west of the intersection with 28th Street. So there would not be additional commercial traffic introduced along 28th Street with this proposal. Additionally, the location of the planned driveway is an appropriate setback from a major intersection such as Markola Road and 28th Street, the Markola being an arterial street and 28th being a collector street. There's a approximately 450 foot setback for the driveway to ensure that safe traffic movements can occur at that shared driveway. So staff has the criteria available for the metro plan amendment and the zone change. Staff notes that the planning commission adopted a majority recommendation in favor of this action. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I would note that in the staff report, the proposal is to rezone for the purpose of a medical office. However, the analysis that staff has provided would consider any type of commercial use that could be allowable on the site. So the applicant has done traffic evaluation to look at incremental changes that could occur. Should a different type of use be developed on the site under its commercial zoning? So that has been taken into consideration.
All right, great. Are there any questions? Councillor Pictionary.
Thank you. Andy did, I noticed that, is there, unless it's smacking me in the face here, did you said that the planning commission said they agreed with most or whatever, it was kind of, it sounded like there was a little bit of it. They hedged on some stuff or whatever. Could you explain what they had, what their concerns were?
There was a dissenting vote. It was not a, a unanimous, a unanimous vote in favor. This dissenting commissioner had noted that residential land use was important to the community and all housing was important. However, it was acknowledged that the majority of the property already had been re-designated from its original commercial designation to residential and also public land and open space for institutional facilities, a future school among that. And so the commissioners acknowledged that the one acre did not represent a significant reduction of units that could be developed on the site. It was also noted that it's a busy intersection. It's not ideal to have residential right on that corner and the exposure is more favorable for a commercial building that would kind of buffer areas to the north and to the, and to the west and in that neighborhood from the current log, log truck traffic, commercial traffic, a lot of vehicles coming back and forth. So that also was noted in the meeting.
So I guess what I want to clarify, it says that you said there's one dissenting vote and it appears as though everything I've read on this, that this is a, it complies with all of the land use laws. It complies with all the coding. It complies with everything, but, but we have someone on the planning commission that disagrees that it doesn't follow the law or coding. Is that, or is that an opinion? They said that that's what they think they should have on there instead of what they've applied for. As far as it, they think it should be residential. Is that correct?
Correct. They, they felt that the criteria for housing, one of the goals, statewide planning goals for housing over road economic development in their view. And so that's why they had cast that, that vote.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Mo.
The only things that we run into here is, is, is we need residential housing, but we also need commercials to provide the jobs for those people to live in those homes. So that's the balance we have. I think we did the correct one.
Councillor Rodley.
I, I don't, I don't have an issue with this as it is. I just want to sort of go on record. My concern is really around sort of traffic in that area and that's in my ward too. Because we already have the, and you touched on it a little bit. So I just somewhere I want this to just be known that I'm aware of it and then just paying attention to the fact that you've already got sort of a road or a throughway that has a lot of mixed use. There's a lot of truck use on that. And putting a school in there and just the more mixed use on there, the more we just have to pay attention to the transportation along there. And just, I'm going to, I'm going to trust and also probably pester that we're going to be paying attention to that as that area develops in order to keep people as safe as possible.
Absolutely. Please know councillor that there will be a new intersection at the extension of V Street and Markola Road. That will not likely be a signalized intersection, but as development occurs on the southern boundary of Markola Meadows, that makes the road seem a little bit more compact and, and there's, there are buildings and trees and other activity closer to the street. It also allows the city to look at the current speed limits along that stretch of road, which are higher than most residential neighborhoods that can be reviewed. There will be crossings for pedestrians installed to allow for school access on Markola Road. So it will tend to mitigate and calm some of the traffic, at least from the 28th Street intersection west. And that's kind of the area of critical concern, at least for residents before it gets more kind of the open industrial areas west, or sorry, to the east towards 42nd Street. And you're, you're a correct staff and the developer acutely aware of transportation issues on this. And so that's an ever-evolving and very critical component of this neighborhood development.
All right, Mayor Bridget.
Mayor Van Gordon, I have a couple procedural matters before the council gets too far in its discussion because this is a land use hearing. Just two things. This is a first reading for the council. So the council is conducting a public hearing tonight. And I would ask that before you open the hearing that the councillors declare any conflicts of interest or exportate contacts. And the other procedural items for a land use public hearing occurred at the planning commission level. So you don't have to go through the whole script like we typically have done in other land use matters. And then just a word to councillors about holding off on deliberating and questions until we have a chance to have the hearing happen. And then you can chime in at this meeting or that when it's on for approval or adoption at the next meeting.
All right, perfect. Thank you. So then let's go through the declaring exportate contact or any potential conflicts of interest. I'll start and then we can go by ward order. I've had no exportate contact and I have no potential conflicts of interest. Daniel.
Same. No, no conflict of interest in any shape or form.
Steve Mo, word two. I've had no ex-party contact or any con. Okay, I'm a Springfield property owner, but I have no conflict of interest, something like that.
So Cory Rodley, I have no, I've had no exportate contact with anyone and no conflict of interest. Early Woodrow, word five. I have had no exportate contact and have I have no conflict of interest.
Joe Pictionary, word six. I have had no exportate contact with the applicants and do not foresee any conflict of interest.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Then it's appropriate to go ahead and open the hearing.
Okay, I'm going to go and open the public hearing. And then we'll give people a minute to get in the queue specific to this item.
And just a reminder, if you would like to speak on this item, please use the raise your hand feature and we can call on you. Mayor, we have one speaker waiting to speak. It's Kevin Schaper. And Kevin, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hi, thanks. Kevin Schaper, word two. And I just wanted to have a sort of brief rebuttal to my councillor to say that we have a housing crisis and we actually have jobs that are having a hard time getting filled right now. And so I think we should consider whether housing is really what we need to prioritize over jobs right now. Thanks.
All right, Neil, do you see anybody else? I don't see anybody else.
Mayor, that appears to be all the speakers for this item.
All right, perfect. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. And then if, then this looks like it's first reading and no action only. So no action. So next item, please.
Mayor, your second public hearing, public hearing number two is annexation of territory to the city of Springfield. Annex 0.48 acres of property located at 186 Dedman Ferry Road, assessors Matt 17-03-14-00, tax lot 1,500 and a portion of Dedman Ferry public right of way abutting the property. This is ordinance number two, an ordinance annexing certain territory addressed as 186 Dedman Ferry Road. Assessors map 17-03-14-00, tax lot 1,500 and a portion of the Dedman Ferry public right of way abutting the subject property to the city of Springfield and Willamette Park and Recreation District, adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date. Again, this is a first reading and Melissa Corino is here for the staff report. And she should be coming up in just a moment.
Hi all, sorry about that. Let me just share my screen real quick. I'm going to, I'm actually at home today and hoping my new internet service will work, but I just wanted to wish you all a good evening. Good to see you all again. I hope you all enjoyed your summer recess. So the city council has requested to, to consider an ordinance to annex an approximately 0.6 acre parcel municipally addressed as 186 Dedman Ferry Road in Springfield. It is highlighted in yellow on the image in front of you. It is located on the north side of Dedman Ferry Road and the east side of International Way. The property owner has requested annexation in order to connect to the city's sanitary sewer for the current residential, residential use on site. This is the current zoning and city boundaries around the property. The site is zoned campus industrial with the urbanizable fringe overlay. As you can see, it is also very close to the urban growth boundary, which is located to the south across Dedman Ferry Road. If annexation is approved, the proposed zoning and city boundaries would look like this. No other zoning changes are requested except for the removable, I'm sorry, for the removal of the urbanizable fringe overlay. For annexations, there are four criterion from the Springfield Development Code, section 5.7-140. The first criterion is the affected territory proposed to be annexed is within the city's urban growth boundary and is contiguous to the city limits. And you could see here that the subject territory is contiguous to the city limits along the western boundary. International Way is already within city limits. Criterion two, the proposed annexation is consistent with applicable policies in the metro plan and in any applicable refinement plans or plan districts. Policies from both the city's metro plan and 2030 comprehensive plans, urbanization elements are met through this application. The subject territory is within the city's urban growth boundary and is currently covered by the urbanizable fringe overlay. With annexation, the parcel will be removed from special districts such as the urbanizable fringe overlay as well as service areas like the Rainbow Water, Rainbow Water and Fire District. And then would be included in urban services such as sanitary sewer, sub-electric and water, Eugene Springfield Emergency Services and Willamette Recreation. Next criterion, where applicable fiscal impacts to the city have been mitigated through an annexation agreement. I think I skipped something. Apologies. There we go. If annexation is approved, the subject territory can easily obtain key facilities and services from Dedman Ferry Road just south of the site. Again, these facilities and services will include sanitary sewer connection, sub-water and electric service, fire protection services from Eugene Springfield Fire Department, police services from Springfield Police and Willamette Parks and Recreation District. Now, where applicable fiscal impacts to the city have been mitigated through an annexation agreement. An annexation agreement is currently being drafted and a final version will be shared with council at the second reading scheduled for September 20th. The agreement covers obligations for the applicant and for the city, including any financial responsibilities. The agreement will include details on future street improvements to Dedman Ferry Road, connection to key urban facilities and services and decommissioning of existing septic system on site. If the annexation is approved by city council, the agreement will be ready to be executed executed by both the applicant and the city and the agreement would then be recorded with Lane County. Because all applicable annexation criteria have been met and annexation will help facilitate full street improvements in this neighborhood as well as bring this property into city limits, staff recommends the council approve this application. That's it for my presentation. I'm here for any questions you may have and I believe the applicants are also in attendance. If you have any questions. And I believe the applicants are also in attendance if you have any questions for them.
Counselor missionary.
Not a question, just a comment that I read to this very thoroughly and also the application. And I appreciate its thoroughness and I don't have, I think it's actually a better use of the land. So I support this.
All right. Anybody else before I open the public hearing? Then I am going to open the public hearing and see if there's anybody who wants to give public comment to this item.
Just a reminder to use the raise your hand feature. And we'll call on you. Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands raised for this particular item.
All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing and before Steve enters a motion to roll it over the public hearing. I just have, I guess, a procedural question here. If we leave the public hearing open until the 20th and the second reading, are we going to have to, we can't adopt this the 20th, correct?
Well, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. The attorneys, but my understanding is if there are no public comments made on September 20th, I believe the council can then vote on it. But again, I defer to the attorneys.
Sorry about that, Melissa, to step on you. That's correct. You'll have the second reading of this that night and you could adopt.
Okay, perfect. All right.
Okay, I make a motion to continue the public hearing for ordinance number two at the September 20th, 2021 regular section.
Second.
Neil, could you call the role, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
All right.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare. Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor missionary.
Hey.
All right, the motion passes, five yays, zero noes, one absent. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is business from the audience. So as a reminder, if you would like to speak during business from the audience, please just use the raise your hand feature and we'll put you in the queue. Mayor, we have one speaker so far. It's Holly S. And Holly, Mayor, if you're ready, I'll unmute. Holly, I'll unmute your microphone.
I think we're ready.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Welcome back, Marion counselors. I'm Holly Shaper from Ward two. I've spent time listening and thinking about previous council meetings. I heard folks asking for change and for direction and how they can help make the change counselors have envisioned. I have heard councils response to be, trust us, we are doing the work. Trust us, you might not see it, but we have made change. Trust us and give the new police chief time. There is an old adage that is important here. While it is good to trust, it is important to verify. So while you expect trust, we demand verification. We have trusted you almost completely for much of the past eight years. In that time, SPD has gone through five police chiefs with 40% of them leaving amid scandal. They have shot six people, killing half of them. And there have been at least 10 police related lawsuit settlements, both internal whistleblower complaints and external complaints from people harmed by SPD. While finding information on these settlements is very challenging, the seven that have been reported on publicly have a sum total of $5,931,000. This is where we have gotten with just trusting and not seeking verification. While trusting, the city has been led to its current state of legal exposure in broad areas, including wrongful death, sexual harassment, excessive use of force and civil rights violations from both internal and external plaintiffs. It is shocking that even while they are the subject of public outcry, this department failed to receive the necessary support and interventions required to enact change and prevent these situations from occurring. In addition to this, the city's liability insurance policy has become incredibly but predictably punitive. We now have a police in jail per claim deductible of $500,000, which is only set to increase from here unless we lose coverage entirely. This is deeply concerning. So if you would like folks to trust that you are doing the work and to trust that this new chief, as opposed to his four predecessors, is going to bring about change and to trust that things are getting better and to trust that you are working diligently to shift away from warriors and to guardians, you must show us your work. Given past history and the current legal and insurance liability exposures, we would be absolutely foolish to simply trust that this is happening and to take you at your word. Please show your work. Show us that you are doing to make these changes to ensure that everyone in Springfield is treated with dignity and respect. Show us that you value our experiences and our feedback and monitoring that change is actually happening. Show us that the changes are meaningful and how they will impact the big issues. Officer involved shootings, sexual harassment, civil rights violations, excessive use of force, to name a few, and not just public perception. Thank you.
Mayor, we'll give folks a moment if you don't mind, but I don't see any other hands at this point.
Let's give them another minute and then we'll get ready for.
Mayor, we do have one additional hand, Camilla Marissa. You should be able to unmute your microphone now.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, sorry, I couldn't see the name of that speaker. Or I couldn't see who that was. Could I please just get that name again?
Yes, that was Holly Shaper. I'm sorry. Was Holly S. is the name she's using right now.
And where is she a community member? Could I get some background?
She's a citizen in Springfield. Like, do you have any specific comments that you want to make for the council to consider?
Uh, no, sorry, I was just trying to get information on who that was. I couldn't see who the speaker was. So it was a little bit confusing, but thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, the next speaker is listed as a community member. So no name associated and you should be able to unmute your microphone now.
Austin, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Yeah, I, we're at Ward four. And I would just like to say, hats off and absolutely our family agrees 100% with what the first speaker Holly had said. So we would just like to second that and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Johannes Tadeo, followed by Lizzie Utterback. And Johannes, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hello, everyone, counselors and mayor. I apologize right now, I currently have vertigo, so. But I do agree with everything that Holly said, and I hope that moving forward that we could also have folks who are speaking feel like they are safe. When another person from the public also comes in comments specifically try to be able to identify who the first speaker was. To me, that sounds scary. And this is coming from a person who comes from a disenfranchised community here in Springfield, who lives in fear. I think everything of what Holly said is on point. We need to be able to see that accountability piece. In order to build trust, in order to feel safe, and especially for the communities that have been targeted and traumatized and have not been able to create a space to heal. It's time to be able to have that space. It's time for myself and my family to feel safe in the community that we contribute. If you all know me, you know what the little grain of salt would I add to the community? And what inspire other and hopefully them inspiring other folks to be able to come out. But when we have situations where there hasn't been any accountability, there hasn't been the body cam, sorry, I apologize. Vertigo. But I hope, I hope that we can be able to have that transparency. And I hope that the videos, especially the ones that the community has been asking for, especially the one. I don't have it exactly on me, but there's a specific date. Oh, here we go. On an event that occurred on May 30th, 2021, where Alexander Kanaugh was shot by SPD officer. Still waiting to be able to see those videos and when would they be released? And if it's something that we have to be able to do a public records request, then that's the next steps that we'll take. But I hope that there is transparency to be able to build trust. Like I said, and like you all heard various different times from other folks in the community. Folks in this community are scared. Of course, for the folks in privileged communities, maybe they're not. But that's because they're not living the same experience that we are. I'm asking for a change and I hope with this new leadership going forward that you are willing to listen and find ways to be able to get there. When I ran for city council, I promised to be able to meet folks where they're at. And I'm still waiting to be able to see that from the council members. Not all of them. I know some of them are actually doing that duties and being able to reach out. Or you all represent us. I hope that you are able to hear us, listen to us, ask questions and come and meet us in the communities where maybe you all haven't been at too. I'm more than happy to be able to give tours to anybody on the council who wants to be able to meet these communities, learn their struggle and be able to find ways to be able to find a solution for us to feel safe. Thank you, council and mayor for allowing me to be able to speak here. And I hope more folks are able to speak right after me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next speaker is Lizzie Utterback, followed by Jennifer Potter. And Lizzie, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hey, this is Lizzie Utterback from Ward three. I wanted to welcome you all back to council. It was really great to be able to meet some of you at the mural celebration. It was great to introduce myself to you, put some names, faces to names. I just wanted to say that I didn't realize our insurance situation was so bad off. So I'm really glad that the first speaker brought that up and I was wondering what the plan was in regards to that. And like the most recent speaker, I'm really disturbed that someone would use their public comment time to try to get information about another commenter. And I was just wondering what protections are in place or what your thoughts on are for keeping us all safe. That's it for now. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Potter. We do not have anyone in the queue behind her at this time. Jennifer, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Potter and I live in Ward three. And I just wanted to speak in support of Johannes and his comments and to second what Holly, the first speaker said. And I really appreciate the council taking the time to listen to our public comment. Thank you.
Mayor, it appears those are our speakers under business from the audience.
Thank you. Is there a council response? Counselor Mo.
Once upon a time, when the public testified, they give their name and address. And there was no, no fear in those days. Times have changed. God, I hate those. I hate that change. But nowadays, we need to protect those people. They need maybe get out the public and speak what they think without fear of anybody tracking down or saying something against. That's all.
Is there anybody else? Counselor Pitts?
Yeah, first of all, thank you to everybody that spoke and I'll be completely transparent is that I was raised that you achieve in silence and I know that that might not be acceptable for some of the citizen members. But one thing I've realized here, the culture of Oregon is very invasive to where when you do have ideas, everybody feels the need to be a part of it. And that's okay at times, but sometimes, you know, too many people at the table can keep a plan from not happening. But then also you have to move in silence, certain things. Now, I'm not talking about the police, but I'm talking about, you know, I mean, if you've heard me talk about cultural shifts and things like that. And I can sit here and tell you, hey, I've been doing a lot of stuff and I have, but you're not going to get details because I need to make sure that these things should come through. Sometimes people are quick to react versus sit back and think. And I don't, like I said, as a large black man, I don't always have that privilege in society. However, you know, I can say for me specifically, once again, I'm not talking about police, like there are things that I'm doing my background because I truly feel that we need to be able to pull in citizens who don't speak, who don't have a voice. And so a lot of things that I'm doing around any type of culture shift, I'm not going to openly talk about just yet. I'm not going to share just yet because I want to make sure that I'm checking my boxes. You know, dot my i's, cross the t's, whatever the phrase is before I present anything. Because if it doesn't happen and then people are, well, you said you were going to do this. No one's going to accept, oh, I couldn't do this because of this, this, this and that. But then also, just with my job, there are a lot of things that inherently will benefit the citizens of Springfield. And I'm trying to find that balance, you know, my loyalties lie with those who kept me here, i.e. my office. And so I want to do things to support them. Then as a council, I want to do things to support the city of Springfield. And sometimes there's an overlap. And I also need to do self-care. And so I understand if you're impatient with certain things and, you know, and that's okay. And I respect that and I understand that, but realize based on my upbringing and based on the methods that I used to get things done, I'm not always going to be very transparent. So, thank you.
Anybody else? I think I have two quick points and maybe Nancy, you can comment. Somebody referenced a body cam video that, or that people were asking about prior to us going out on break. And I know we were still developing a policy under which conditions we would release it. Do you know if that's been released or when the ETA would be that it would be available to folks?
To my knowledge, that particular incident has not been released. I, I need to double check this with Chief Sher, but it's my understanding that the district attorney can make it, makes kind of the ultimate determination whether or not body cam footage is released. Because that's part of adjudicating a crime. And it's within her purview to release or not. So that's kind of, you know, when you're, when we're working with body cameras, that's something that we have to kind of work out with the district attorney's office. I know that Chief Sher has been in conversation with them about how to best move forward on when we have requests such as this.
We have an adopted policy to do it. I know that this gets a little bit tricky, right? Because sometimes it's governed by a department policy and sometimes it's governed by, by actually what the DA needs because it's an active investigation. But do we have the adopted policy yet?
We do have an adopted body worn camera policy, yes. I would have to look into it to see if it addresses clearly as far as the release of footage. But we do have the policy.
Yeah. Yeah, could you check? And, you know, I know we're not going to know tonight, but the next time, you know, maybe you can write us a long note about, you know, when that, when that's going to become available. Because I think the, the challenge is to make sure that we're being right to the investigation, but also making information available as streamlined as possible. And, you know, if it's not being held up by, by the DA, then, you know, we should be releasing it.
Okay, and I believe Mary Bridget Smith has a comment to contribute as well.
Yeah, I really just to add on to what Nancy was saying. The, in this particular matter, pardon me. We did have a request for this, but since our pending criminal charges out of this matter, we're unable to release this particular video at this time. Our body worn camera policy does have reference to releasing records and public records. It is, doesn't have a, I would say it's based on the statute and purposely does not have a lot of detailed information because it's so situation specific about releasing body camera videos. There are things to think about with releasing body worn camera videos in terms of obscuring folks' faces and the cost and time it takes to do that. And then whether the release of that particular videos in the public interest or if any public records exemptions apply. So it is, I don't think it's intended not to be transparent, but there's just a lot of things you got to think through before those records get and those cameras get released. And I know that SPD is interested in looking at how to do that and we're checking with. how to do that, and we're checking with other communities about how they approach body worn camera videos overall now that we have them in place and we're getting more of them. Um, so I know that's something that's been top of mind for them.
Yeah, and my concern is not us, you know, is not worried that like we're not being transparent. It's more that this is our first time through this as a community and really trying to talk through, okay, well, what does that look like? And, you know, how does, you know, how does that sort of criminal investigation arm look, knowing that we can't release things if there are part of a pending investigation?
Okay, thank you. I'll, I can carry that back. Thank you.
Counselor Mo.
One of the things we're faced with is we went back and changed our budget a couple of years ago to purchase the body cams. And the public was expecting that the footage from those body cams would be protect the public and the police. And they some that and because of that, some they somehow think they're, they have that accessible for the common person to see. Probably that's not true. And and so I think that needs to be sort of communicated to the public. Uh, because they're maybe a little frustrated because they can't get in there now.
Well, thank you, Counselor Mo. I I do know that the council has requested that SPD provide them provide this body with an update. Um, I think it's the last update we did was in April, so we are due to to have that scheduled. So I will work with Chief Sher to make sure that we address uh body worn camera footage and transparency when we do do that update for the council.
Quite deliberate. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Nancy and Mary Bridget. Um, yeah, I think we just all recognize that this is, you know, we deployed in late May, early, early June, and that this is really going to be learning on us as elected officials and as a community and, you know, as a department. So it's going to take a while talking through this. Um, the one comment I also did want to make is just to reiterate the, you know, back to the question about, you know, all the work that's being done in policing right now. And just um, I think Damian had some really good points that some of this is not just isn't going to be seen involves personnel, involves discipline, it involves folks, you know, it's some of it's pending litigation, right? And, you know, um, I think we're trying to sort through and give people a look at the work that we're doing in a way that is productive, that can be shared, and then understanding that not all of this can be shared because of a lot of different issues. So I would just ask that people be patient. We're working on it. And that we we hear the concern.
Mary, if I may comment on that, I do appreciate you saying that because um, she sure has made a lot of changes internally in SPD, and we've seen a lot of really positive outcomes from that. Um, some of these things have been, you know, really amping up policies, providing clarity, um, making sure that there's accountability on all aspects of the organization. He's done some restructuring, making sure that people are, you know, um, in the doing the the appropriate role for them. So, you know, he he really is thoughtful in how he is undertaking this work. But, you know, we we also have to comply with labor negotiations and the contracts and rules regarding public employees, which is why, you know, you don't hear about some of these internal things that we're doing because some of them may maybe related to discipline or protected under a contract, in which case we won't discuss it.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Um, next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is any business from the city council.
Counselor Rodley.
I just wanted to take a moment just to to say out loud that it's the one year anniversary of the Holiday Farm Fire, which happened this time last year, one year anniversary and just um, just my ongoing appreciation for the firefighters, whether they are are part of our Springfield Eugene firefighters or Wildland firefighters or all the folks who are continuing to work in what is still a very challenging environment. And just to just to commemorate that this is a challenging day for a lot of folks who have experienced the loss and that I have appreciated sort of be having a front row seat to sort of the the stories and the processes as we've been paying attention to what has happened just in that year. And I know that the fact that it was smoky today in our communities just sort of exacerbated the feelings of like, oh, yeah, this happened a year ago. So I just wanted to take a moment because y'all give me a little bit of a seat to say, yeah, it's been a year. And there's still a long way to go and just sort of commemorating and and saying that it's been a year. Thanks.
Counselor Woodrow. You're on mute, Merrily.
I had that feeling when I walked outside today and smelled the smoke. The first thing I thought of was it's been a year, you know, we got past Labor Day, but it's been a year for since that happened. It was a, it was a a few seconds before I got myself oriented because that was really scary last year. To tag on to your appreciation for the firefighters, I would just like to tag on and say, yes, we're about what today's the seventh, so we're four days away from three losing three hundred and forty-three firefighters twenty years ago. So that's quite a, that's quite a loss. It's still a loss. Um, I lost a girlfriend in a north tower. So I think about it twenty years later, and they may be on the other side of the country, but it affected all of us. So it's something to remember and think about for their families and everybody else that was connected with those north and south towers.
Thanks, Merrily. Anybody else? All right, next item, please.
The next item is business from the city manager. There is one item. It's the DLCD grant applications for for PFSP amendments. And there's two resolutions. I'll read those into the record. Resolution number two, a resolution in support of a grant application seeking planning assistance from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to amend the Public Facilities and Services Plan, the PFSP, a refinement plan of the Eugene Springfield Metropolitan Area General Plan, which is the metro plan. And then resolution number three, a resolution in support of a grant application seeking technical assistance from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to amend the Public Facilities and Services Plan, the PFSP, a refinement plan of the Eugene Springfield Metropolitan Area General Plan, the metro plan, and Sandy Belson is here for the staff report.
Good evening, mayor and council. Can you hear me? Thank you. Um, so tonight I have a two for for you, a two for one. So this is one agenda item, two resolutions, and one project. The idea behind it is that there are two grant applications that have potential to fund this one project. And so we're asking for your support for both of them in case we don't get the first one that we can go ahead and apply for and maybe get the second one. And they're both grants offered by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And as you heard in the title of the resolutions, to help us update the Public Facilities and Services Plan and to include specifically um, the amendments that would be required to carry out the sub master plan, the sub and rainbow water district are working together and have created a new water master plan for the community. And so those, there are some projects and maps that needed to be updated to account for that master plan. And then the Glenwood Stormwater uh conceptual design that we've had done indicated that a need for an additional outfall to the Willamette River for the big storm events, and that would also need to be included in the Public Facilities and Services Plan to support development in the north waterfront area. So um, that's the background. Uh, we don't have the capacity at this point to undertake this, and it's also a metro wide project because it involves all of the metro plan, which is Eugene and Springfield and Lane County. And so El Cog Lane Council of Governments has submitted the first application and would submit the second one if needed and do the majority of the work on behalf of the local governments.
Are there any questions? Merrily. You're on mute, Merrily.
Okay, I I don't have a question. I just, when I read through it, I I saw the creativity behind it and then the ability to be able to use El Cog, and I just, it sounded really good to me, the whole, the whole being able to put that all together. I thought that sounded really good.
Anybody else? Steve.
Sandy's comment triggered a question in my mind. We have to have a water master plan on the others. Do we have an electrical master plan?
I believe that Sub does have one. I have not looked to verify that, but the electric service is part of the Public Facilities and Services Plan. And so um, we do have an electrical component, and I'm assuming that Sub has a master plan for electricity, but I'm not actually sure.
I know. I, that's not, thank you for that.
Any other questions? All right, Steve, you have the motion.
Oh, okay. Uh, I make a motion that we approve resolution number two and resolution number three. Tag it.
All right, it's been moved in second. And Neil, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
You're on mute, Damian. All right, let's just keep going, and we'll come back to Damian.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare. Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
Counselor Pictionary.
Yes.
And Counselor Pitts. Must be having some microphone problems.
Then um, the motion passes four to zero with two absent. And thank you, Sandy, for putting two of those letters in the same motion. Next item, please.
The next item is business from the city. Um, I'm sorry, any other business from the city before we get to the next item?
No further business. Thank you.
And then the last item is business from the city attorney. Um, you have one item, a revision of bylaws for the Springfield Police Advisory Committee, the SPAC, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the BPAC, the Springfield Arts Commission, Library Advisory Board, and Springfield History Museum Committee and ordinance amending Springfield Municipal Code Section 2.452 Board Membership. Uh, Mary Bridget Smith and A.J. Nites are here for the staff report. And um, let me read this ordinance into the record first. Sorry, Mary Bridget. Ordinance number three and ordinance amending Springfield Municipal Code Section 2.452 Board Membership and adopting a severability clause is the first reading.
Uh, thank you, and mayor and council. I'm here tonight to present to the council some revised bylaws for your boards and commissions, the ones that were listed in the item. Uh, last year, the council embarked on a new recruiting system, and also part of that, we took the opportunity to look at boards and commissions, uh, did some standardizations of bylaws, put together a training guide for volunteers, and met with each board and commission to go over their bylaws and just make sure everything was going okay. So I'm asking tonight to approve the bylaws for these listed committees. The Library Advisory Board actually has municipal code sections um, that need to be amended and a bit different procedurally. So this is just the first reading for that. Um, kind of following up on this project, I still need to meet with the historic commission. I'll have those to you later. And then we've left alone Budget Committee, CDAC, and Planning Commission. Those are different types of committees. They have different staff um support and different missions than the other boards and commissions that are in this item. So those bylaws most likely won't change, or if they do, they'll come to the council in a different way. Um, and then we're still going to work on doing a training video for the volunteers and your boards, commissions, and committees, and then revamping the city's website to update that information. So it's a little more volunteer friendly and updated. Um, and if you unless you have any questions, you don't have to do a hearing for the change in the municipal code and can just move forward with the motion.
All right, I have some questions.
Okay.
Steve.
Okay, uh, the I love our citizens that volunteer for these things, but within the bylaws of these committees, there's supposed to be appointed a liaison. I've seen a board member liaison. She'll be responsible for scheduling a joint meeting of the respective board and the city council every two years. Those around this don't know that at all. And so I don't think it's been followed up. I think it should be put in the bylaws that that is one of the responsibilities that they have to do each, well, week period. It's it's section, section two point six point four.
Section six point four of the of the bylaws or of the
Steve, could you read the section again?
Oh, sure. I'll read it. Okay, uh, it's six point four and page six sixteen or seventeen. The board member liaison for the Arts Committee Historic Commission, Library Board, and Springfield Police Advisory Committee shall be responsible for scheduling a joint meeting of the respective board and city council every two years. The Lord and in the committee bylaws, they're not told that.
Right.
They don't know that.
So you're talking about in the council's operating policies and procedures.
Right, that's it.
Joint meetings with each committee.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that you're right. That's not in the bylaws. The bylaws for these each committees are really just their framework for how they do their work. Um, but that is something that we can let the liaisons know and also council leadership is aware when they set the agenda if they want to have joint meetings with folks. I think we left it out of the bylaws just to give a little flexibility in case the council schedule doesn't allow for a joint meeting with somebody. Um, I think recently you might have had a joint meeting with the planning commission was the most recent joint meeting that I can recall. Um, so it was left out of these bylaws. We know it's something that does that does occur. We just wanted to give you some flexibility in case it just didn't get scheduled.
Yeah, I just think it's important that they know the response, not responsibility, what what they can do, they can communicate with the council or council meeting, they can request that, and they don't know that. That's
Steve.
Yeah.
Could, could you clarify, like, because the way I would read that, since it was a council bylaws, that we as the liaison, the council group is the liaison is responsible to
schedule. Actually, that's not it. It's under six point four. It's the board member liaison for the, within the committee.
And that's the, that's us.
That's not a council.
Yeah, I would have read that as us.
That's, that's a counselor. That's a counselor.
Like we as the liaison to that committee should be coming back. And, you know, maybe we can touch on this one when we get
The section is communicating with the mayor and council. And I read that as a member of that committee is responsible for trying to set that up. So, um, anyway, that's where that's where I see it. That's where I'm coming. Hey, there it is.
Yeah, maybe we can talk about this at to get it to get it clarified about how to make sure these meetings get set up. But I would have read that as like, because we are the liaisons to that from the council to that committee. We're responsible to communicate back to council what's going on with that committee. So I would have read that as us is whatever boards you sit on, you've got to get that meeting scheduled. But maybe we can just take that one and clarify it when when we get that far in the year.
Yeah, it needs to be wordsmithed.
Yeah. Merrily.
Yeah, um, that's one of the things I had written down. If you read through what Mary Bridget has brought through to us tonight, it identifies us as the liaison board member, non-voting member, but at the liaison. So that helps to clarify that sentence anyway helps. It helps to clarify. It may be better to, you probably clarify it better, but that helps to clarify. I had a couple of things when I read through them. One was um maybe a better clarification between of, I know we're trying to, we're trying to streamline and make sure it down to nine members per committee. Um, or as close as we can get to that, voting members. Um, and I, as I read through it, I I got confused into some of them. Nine, nine, whoever they represent, and then underneath was non-voting member, council, non-voting member, whatever. Um, but one of the thing, one of them in the, and under the Arts Commission specifically, at the top, it it clarified who the voting members, who the nine members were. It went through the non-voting member, the liaison, and all that. It got down to the bottom, and then it clarified where the Springfield Arts Commission members would come from in the community, being a business or whatever. And it was it was further clarification of the first line. And I thought it should be, maybe should be put together with with the nine voting members at the top, because it really further clarified who they were. It it said, being separated, you might lose, you could read through it and easily lose that clarification that they needed to be connected to Springfield somehow, either through a business or living or being a resident or whatever. And the top line doesn't necessarily state that specifically the the number one underneath Arts Commission. Well, I think it's one A.
So some clarification that the voting outlaw at large folks, though, need to have the qualifications that are listed in like B, C, and D.
Right. Okay, right. Yeah, that that I think I think it's like one A, and then when you get down to one D, it clarifies who's one AR. And if they got put together, it would further clarify, make it more, make it more, make more sense that they are connected to each other. And that was, that was where my confusion came as I read through it. I understood what it was saying. But it was, I I wonder if it would be easier to have two sections or two points underneath the membership, one that clarified the voting members, and then the second part that clarifies the non voting members, just to keep it streamlined, because it was in, it was a little bit confusing. And I knew and I knew I was reading. So but it's a little confusing from from that standpoint that, you know, voting and non-voting members for the different committees. And like I said, I know that we're trying to keep on at nine member kind of, you know, make it more universal with each committee that it's nine members. And so maybe just sectioning them out between the two might be a little bit easier. The liaison question. I'll I'll be very honest. When I first became a counselor, nobody told me what the liaison to the committees was. I I didn't have a clue. I didn't know what my job was. I didn't know what I was supposed to do. I didn't have any explanation as to what a council liaison was to a committee. The first, one of the first committees I was a liaison to, I never went to the meeting. I didn't know I was supposed to. I thought I was just the person that if they had a problem, they'd get in touch with me, and I would take whatever their concern was to counsel. I had no idea that I was supposed to attend every meeting that they had. So somewhere along the line, that information has to be transmitted to to everybody on council. So it was a hard lesson to learn, but I feel I learned it. But I had no, I I was clueless. I had no idea I was supposed to attend every meeting. So I think it's it's important just to bring that stuff up and make sure that it's 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 inserted in there somewhere. So somebody's paying attention.
Steve.
I want to add just one more thing to what I said earlier of under 6.1. Each year, each each board commission, each board commission, committee, or task force shall designate one member to serve as liaison with the city council. And not a city councilor, that's somebody from that board. So I and I applied at 6.4, so I read it differently. So.
Yeah, I think I think it's like, we've got two different issues coming on. One of them is to sort of update, you know, the, you know, and clarify the bylaws. And then I think there's a valuable conversation to have about making sure everybody's on the same page about what's our role? How are we like, how are these additional meetings getting scheduled? And I think that can happen. Ooh, I'm going to say October 18th when we do council goal setting, but I'm not, I don't have the schedule right in front of me. But I think it's about, that's a valuable conversation to have to make sure we're all kind of going the same way. So. All right, other questions?
Thank you.
And just to follow up on Counselor Woodrow's question or suggestion about the Arts Commission bylaws, since that's not a substantive change to the bylaws and the council's required to approve them. If it's all right with you, you could still approve them in substance, you know, as they are tonight. I can make that change. Since we're not really substantially changing the text, you know, that the text of the bylaws and then go back and make that a little more clear under that section. That's no problem.
Oh, sure. Sure.
Okay.
So so we have to trust you, right?
You'll be able to verify it, though, definitely. It'll be on the website somewhere.
Joe.
But with some historical perspective, that each year or each year, the cap, we would meet with each of the separate committees at a work session and just do and have a lot of 20 minute briefing. So not only allows just a liaison, but that was that was a liaison position, so to speak, was eliminated. We just met with each committee and gave them a 15 minute or 20 minute slot, and they can meet with us during a work session, give us an update, and they can all go and we can all talk to them. That seems to me, I mean, that's what we used to do, and it was pretty effective. And it opened up communications, plus it included all the members and included them as part of council. And it seems to me that would be just a lot easier if we just put plug like, you know, got a list of the committees, plug them into a work session, give them 15 minutes so we can go over any issues, or they can raise any issues and see them next year.
Yeah. And and again, I think separating this is important because I think that's part of getting back to normal business in the post 2020 world where we have a better, a more consistent view on what's kind of going on the next, you know, over two, like, over two year period. I'm I actually agree with that approach.
Seems a lot easier, and it seems like we wouldn't be excluding anybody, would be most inclusive for all the members. Plus, it gives us a chance to meet them, and we can re reconnect with those members. And it's not that big a deal to have them come in for a meeting, or we can still zoom. If we're still zooming, our our crazy heads off.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's what I would, I would like to see that. And it just seems like that answers all the questions of people's concerns, takes care of all that.
Any other comments? Or or a motion?
Okay, then trusting trusting Mary Bridget. I make the motion that we approve the proposed revised by bylaws.
Tag it. All right, it's been moved in seconded. Neil, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
All right.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare. Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Yes, sir.
All right, the motion passes five to zero with one absent. Next item, please.
Mayor, I have one more item. It's not on the agenda, but I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce to the community and the council, you've already met him, but our new presiding judge, James Tierney, is in the audience. We're going to try and bring him up to be a panelist and to come on camera if he can. Judge Tierney is starting with the city. He is our new presiding judge. And he had asked me a question late last week, and I just thought it might be nice for you to meet him. And he'll also be reaching out to you individually to try and make a connection and see if you'd like to talk with him with some of the items that came up during his hiring process. But Judge Tierney, I think I can see his box here anywhere on the screen. I'm not sure if you can get his camera on, but he's here today just to follow up with an introduction and say hello.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm ensuring you can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you, Judge.
I I'm clicking on the start video button, but it will not work for some reason. But thank you for your time. I I'm very happy to be the presiding judge, and I would love to extend an invite to all the council members to come and visit the court and see what we're doing, including all of our access to justice efforts. And just to start a dialogue between the court and each council member to see how we're doing and what we can do to ensure that the mission of Springfield is being accomplished, as well as following following the the rules and regulations of the Springfield Municipal Court.
It would be great to see a schedule so that we might know when we when we might visit.
Sure, my my plan was going to be if 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 accessible, excuse me, if acceptable, to email council members and let them know when would be the best times to visit. And then so that we can walk through the court and answer any questions. We have a really packed schedule most days, but I'm happy to provide that and and see what works for everyone.
That'd be great.
That'd be exciting.
Well, I certainly appreciate that. I'd like to ask question or answer any questions that will help the court. Just a couple of things that we are doing. We are ensuring that all members of Springfield can attend court virtually or in person. We have virtual dockets every day. We have in-person dockets three times a week. We're still continuing jury trials, and we are doing our best to really expand accessibility for individuals who speak Spanish and Spanish only. We're drafting Spanish plea petitions, and we passed out some new information for any defendants who need interpreters so that the local court-appointed attorneys can ensure that that is is working appropriately. So we're working with access to justice issues. And other than that, it's been a very fruitful three weeks on the bench so far. And I'd love to discuss all of that with the council members when we have an opportunity in the future.
Right. Well, welcome aboard, Judge. We're so glad that you you got got here and you're hired and you're in the job at least for the first three weeks. So thank you for stopping by and and saying hi to everybody.
I do appreciate that, and I'll be emailing in the near future, and I hope they can come by and visit.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. Take care.
Thank you.
Just one last thing from the city attorney back on the boards and commissions. I neglected to see if A.J. had any feedback on that project. She'd done a lot of work there, too. And definitely does a lot of work with your boards, commissions, and committees. So just that opportunity there if she had something to add.
The only thing I have to add this evening is in regards to your batch recruitment, we will be posting a number of openings on the website this week. We currently have an opening for our El Rapa citizen position that we've been that we are accepting applications on. So again, if the public that's listening is interested, or if the council knows anyone that would be interested, please spread the word. I'm happy to take calls, emails, and assist in any way to get more people applying for our boards, commissions, and committees.
Amy, I sent you one for El Rapa yesterday.
I didn't see it, so I will look for it, and I appreciate you.
Once El Rapa position closing, A.J.
Of course, I promoted it and didn't have the answer to that as I promoted it.
We can pause for station identification.
I apologize. I I like to show that, like lots of people, I am human. And I am pulling that right now because I don't have it off the top of my head. It appears. Our deadline is 5:00 PM on Friday, September 17. Please note that because of COVID, if you have any questions in regards to how to submit your application, if you are unable to submit it electronically via email, if you call my number, which is listed on our website, I am happy to schedule and make arrangements to make sure that you're you are able to provide your application one way or another, whether it be electronic or hard copy.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Do we have any other business, Mary Bridget?
No other business. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned for the evening. Take care.
Bye, guys.